We're good to go, Shannon?
We are good to go.
Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the May 2nd, I'm sorry, June 2nd, Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that our council members are present with the exception of Mr. Malloy, who's having trouble signing in, but we'll make sure we work with him to try to get him signed on. Tonight, we do have one announcement. And that is that the Idaho Transportation Department is planning to upgrade the interchange at Interstate 90 and Idaho 41 and the nearby intersection of Mullen Avenue and Post Falls. ITD is holding an online meeting from May 28th to June 18th. To learn more and comment, you can follow a link to the ITD's website on the city's homepage or call ITD's Corleone Office. Shannon, I just got a text from Mr. Malloy. Can you reach out to him somehow, or do we need to have him check his city email?
Will do.
Thank you. Next up, are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Seeing none, Shelley, would you please provide the consent calendar?
Okay, item A is minutes from the May 14th, 2020 special city council meeting. Item B is minutes from the May 19th, 2020 city council meeting. Item C is payables, May 12th through May 25th, 2020. Item D is street department purchase of a 10-wheel dump truck. Item E is mutual aid assistant agreement between the Post Falls Police Department and the Kootenai County Sheriff's Office Boat Patrol. Item F is contract with Porter W. Yet Company for the 2020 asphalt grinding. Item G is the cash and investment report through April 2020. Item H is contract with Welch Comer and the Hudson Company for the Pleasant View Road eligibility study for a potential urban renewal district. Item I is updated sanitary sewer outfall easement agreement on Dawn and Vita Ls. Item J is Montrose 13th Addition Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item K is professional services agreement with TO Engineers for additional bath metric survey at Batbit Black Bay Park. And item L is annexation agreement granted right of way and grant of easement for savory annexation.
Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I've entertained a motion.
I would move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, would you please take the roll?
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson. Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Motion passes. Shelley, Joe stated that the web ID you gave him was for the workshop?
Oh, okay.
Do you have his contact information? If not, I have it. If you want to come in, I'll give it to you on my phone.
Okay, I will come over there.
Council, thanks for your indulgence. We want to get Joe on board here.
Sure.
Next item up is the public hearing. Tonight's public hearing is on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And is that going to be, Mr. Manley?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, John Manley, Planning Manager here. Tonight's comp plan presentation is going to be briefly with me, and then Bill Grimes is going to take it from there to introduce the final draft Comprehensive Plan. So, being the project lead for the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, it has been quite an experience, two-plus years, and I'm glad this journey is about ready to conclude and be over, but it's been a great process. I would like to thank the members of the city council for participating in all the workshops, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff that has provided their commentary and collaborating with the consultant on this project. Personally, I believe it's going to assist Post Falls with its growth. And Bill Grimes will kind of go into that part of his final draft and how that may happen. So, just wanted to, before I pass it off to Bill, just say thanks to everybody. I'm glad I'm here, and Bill, if you want to take it from here and present the final draft comp plan.
All right, thank you very much, John. It really has been a pleasure to work with the city over the last two and a half years on this process, and I think we have a great, a great plan here that's made it here to counsel. Many of you are already familiar with the document, so I'll go through the presentation here. It's essentially the same one we gave to the Planning Commission. And then we can open it up for council questions and any public testimonies. Let me go ahead and share my screen here, if I can. Let's see. And I am boldly going to go ahead and do the PowerPoint presentation. Okay. All right, I trust you can see the PowerPoint. Nice picture of the falls here. So, when, when we started this, this process, we had a mandate really to update the vision from the 2009-2010 plan. And, and we did it touching on several really important components here. We, we were looking at a population forecast that had us topping 100,000 by the year 2024, I'm sorry, 2044. Which is, which is really quite, quite a bit larger than we are today, but it's consistent with what KMPO is forecasting. And much of that growth is really up to the north and northeast. But even as we were growing, we heard a call for recognition of what is making some of Post Falls neighborhoods really special and unique. And so, we decided to take a look at Post Falls really as a collection of neighborhoods. And we came up with a character areas map, which shows up in the plan's introduction and talks about some of the characteristics that make each area unique and some of the aspirations that are unique to, to each of the areas. We also understood that economic prosperity and a balance in economic sectors was really key to Post Falls' future, particularly if we're going to have an economically and sustainable and fiscally sustainable growth pattern. And even though we are looking at growth pressure, people are very, very interested in projecting small-town character and maintaining the identity of Post Falls that made this community the place where they've chosen to invest and to live. So, this is a snapshot of the character areas. This is one of the initial character area diagrams. I believe it's a little bit different than the one that is included in the final plan, but you can begin to see how the neighborhood identities really begin to call, call for attention and also inform the policy direction that's included in the plan. It is something that was built on detailed conversations with staff. This was about at the midpoint of our planning process, where we had a chance to speak with stakeholders and community members, went through our studio session in the rotunda. I'll talk about that here in a little bit. But it really did derive from some of our most essential and initial conversations in the community. We, we took a look at the, the existing policy, not only in the Comprehensive Plan, but also in the Highway 41 corridor plan and in the downtown plan, to take a look at where your existing policy really seems to be consistent with what we've heard. And we found in some pretty important areas that the policy of the last decade still fits. It may, may need to adjust it, but it, but it still fits. And that's a call for fiscal sustainability, making sure the city is prioritizing its investments and matching those investments with revenues. Also, there were concerns and hopes that the city could continue design excellence, and that is carried forward in, in policy in this Comprehensive Plan. And that there are some places where a compact development forum, where you really are looking at fine-grained mixing of land uses, commercial, residential, open spaces, institutional uses, that it's suitable in some places in town, like in the downtown, and also in some of the newly developing neighborhoods along Highway 41 and in the north. And somewhat related to that, making sure that we're being strategic in how we annex land and that we prioritize annexing land that's within city limits, still accommodating annexation of land on the periphery, but making sure that our annexation strategy gives us the kind of land use pattern that we really, really want and have the right kinds of fiscal consequences. There are some areas where the policy is written 10 years ago or so, may need to change, and this plan does that. This one does adjust the growth rate to be consistent with KMPO's current projections. Also, the earlier Comprehensive Plan was really counting on the smart code being a knock-down, drag-out success. I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case. There have been some areas where it's worked well, some cases where it needs, needs some, some work. And so, this, this plan allows for the philosophies behind the smart code to persist, but still understanding that maybe smart code may not necessarily be the be-all, end-all solution. We also needed to make sure that the plan dealt with Highway 41 in a way that's consistent with the way development trends have been proceeding and some of the aspirations that people are seeing for the Highway 41 corridor. So, an active incorporation of the Highway 41 corridor plan, but then some adjustments to things like the baggage roads that were part of that plan to make sure that they're aligned with what the community is hoping for. And then, also, we are looking for maybe a more proactive engagement in the area of city impact for the city. This is actually a testament, I think, to the way the city has been working with the ECI recently, but it's an advance from the policy that included in the existing Comprehensive Plan. So, we wanted to make sure the city is a potent actor with Kootenai County, Crafton, with Hayden, with Corleone, and all of these issues related to the area of city, city impact. Also, folks have been talking to us through the process about compatibility of commercial uses and multifamily uses, making sure that as they are developed, and even before that, as they're conceived, that they take into account design compatibility and are located consistently with what the community is hoping for. And then people were also talking to us, particularly in the studio and during our time at Post Falls Days, an importance that they put in trails and want to make sure that we have continued emphasis for trail development in the community. And there are some places where the existing policy really just needed to be replaced, often as a benefit of what we've been learning over the last 10 years of managing growth, and then just reflecting what we're hearing from community members today. Making sure that we have enhanced connectivity, which means you can get from one place to another through a variety of paths. You don't necessarily have to rely on a single road or a single trail to get there. Perhaps extending, extending the, the philosophy of compactness and compact development patterns to other areas, particularly where the development community wants to take the chance and provide for something like that. Looking at our corridor design, particularly our some of our arterial, so we can make them a little bit more lively than they may be now. And then developing a commercial scale that's consistent with what the community needs. Back in 2008, 2009, the reality for commercial development...
Bill, we have lost your audio.
Whose audio was lost? Was that mine?
We have you back.
Okay, great, thank you. We have a great deal of land that is zoned for commercial use, but we don't necessarily have the market for it, and economists are saying that the market to fill that probably isn't going to come back. So, we needed to make sure that we looked at the scale of our commercial districts to, to fit them to what our expected economic development pattern is going to be. And that also related to how we begin to define our zoning districts and how we relate which zoning districts are appropriate and which Comprehensive Plan land use designation, so that we get the kind of mix that we're looking for. And then we also were looking at paying a bit more attention to multifamily residential design, so that we can get the type of product that people are hoping for, and that when multifamily develops, it develops in a way that's compatible with, to adjacent commercial and single-family residential neighborhoods. So, some of the policy, and, and I'll just direct you to Appendix B. It is, it is the bones and muscle of this Comprehensive Plan. We worked very closely with staff on this, and it's a major departure from your existing plan, but what we're trying to do with this Appendix B is to provide a consolidated place where council members, where your planning and zoning commission, where staff, where developers, where community members can see what your policy direction is for the next 20 years. So, that, that one collection of a dozen or so pages has all of the Comprehensive Planning policies. What we're trying to do in the area of land use policy is to make sure that we have room for people to cluster uses and to mix them, they have that flexibility available to them, that we're finding ways to, to manage the residential landscape, incorporating things like multifamily product design, so that we can get the type of architectural product and also the streetscape that we're looking for there. Wanting to make sure that Post Falls can continue its growth as an employment center in, in the region. And it was fascinating to us to, to learn early on in the process that Post Falls daytime population is pretty close to its resident population. So, you have just about as many people leaving Post Falls to work as you have coming into Post Falls to work, and that's, that's a sign of, of a maturing community if there, if there is one. And then we also have policy to make sure that as the community grows, we're still focusing on compatibility with the landscape and with the developed character in the community. In transportation, we are trying to make sure we can facilitate auto movement. We had the benefit of starting this Comprehensive Plan as the city was updating its transportation plan, and so we were able to take a lot of that goal and policy direction from that document and incorporate it into the Comprehensive Plan. That transportation plan also spoke to making sure that we have facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists. The Comprehensive Plan maybe ratchets that up a notch, ratchets that up a notch by looking to introduce pedestrian scale into the development that is bordering our arterial and local streets. We also underscore the importance of the interdependence between land use and transportation. The old adage is that development follows pipe and pavement. And so, as we're looking to develop new pavement, let's find ways to do it in such a way that generates the land use demand that we're really looking for. So, there's a very powerful relationship between the two topics. And though we don't have a lot of public transportation in place now, the plan foresees that it may be part of our future, particularly looking out into the distance. So, how do we develop particularly our commercial and our more intense residential areas to be well-served by public transportation? So, that's, that's also something you'll find in the policy mix. And so, once again, Appendix B is a great tool. It does give you a single source for finding policy reference and direction as you're making decisions on land use actions or on budgets. But I think that, that one of the, one of the predominant benefits from this is that it gives us an opportunity to make sure that the policy between the various topic areas is consistent, that we have eliminated redundancy. If you look at the old plan, you'll see similar policies and various elements. We went ahead and consolidated them into a single goal or a single policy. And then it also gives us a real easy opportunity to figure out how to turn these policies into implementation actions. So, if you're looking for a punch list of things to do, this Comprehensive Plan does that, both in Appendix B and then in the implementation chapter. So, the process has, has been a long one, but I think it's been appropriately long. We kicked off with a series of orientation interviews, speaking with representatives of community organizations, city officials, just a real, real grab bag of folks. We had about three days, 36 interviews that we conducted with people. We also had a studio in the rotunda, which we cleverly scheduled for a voting day, so as people were coming into the polling place, we, we corralled them and pulled them in to have a conversation about the Comprehensive Plan. We had a series of community workshops. We also produced and made available online draft plan and also some fonts about how it would translate to zoning. We made that available online. We had a public rollout. We had a workshop. You probably remember that, those of you who were on council then. And just earlier this year, we had a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and now here we are for public hearing before the city council. Our orientation interviews are really, really interesting for me. I conducted those. And, and we took notes, not only in terms of just writing down what people were saying in words, but also trying to get a sense for what the geography is in Post Falls and how people relate to the community, what they hope for. We began to see spatial implications, and by overlaying these notes one on top of another, we got to see some of the areas that really warranted the greatest degree of attention. John also decided to form an advisory group. It was a great idea. We had a chance to, to really litmus test our various policy and zoning ideas, so that this, this group of folks in the development community and community organizations could, could take part and give us some guidance. We had several meetings with them, and the plan evolved as a result of that. This is a page from the advisor group packet that we assembled early on in the process. And then we had our studio in the rotunda. I mentioned that. It was a three-day consultant and community studio. Staff was there participating. We had some city council visitors. We actually had officials from, from Rathrum, from Hayden, from Corleone join in and see what we were up to. We asked people to comment on the vision, and then once, once we got them engaged in that, we asked them to talk to us a little bit about policy and some of the ways they hoped to see Post Falls grow over the next 20 years. Fascinating event. We had two community workshops during that rotunda in the evening, and we had really hundreds of visitors there. We had a recommendations workshop where we consolidated what people were asking for into a series of initiatives, changing policy, changing the landscape, trying to modify things to respond to what people were looking for. And when I say people, I don't mean just interested citizens. We certainly had a lot of those, but the development community is a powerful force in Post Falls as well, and a lot of them are looking to do things that are pretty creative and in line with what the community is after, if only policy would let them. So, we wanted to make sure that we had that kind of opportunity available for everybody. We had an online survey where we asked community members to assess some of their highest priorities and, and give us a sense of direction on how we could fine-tune policy to achieve those. And then we produced a conceptual land use map and a sense of what our final policy recommendations would be in a rollout workshop. And that's not enough. Not everybody can attend a workshop. And so, John and I went to Post Falls Days. We spent two days in our booth, and John, I don't know how many people we spoke to. I think we were too busy to really keep a tally, but we did speak to a couple of hundred people who stopped in, visited with us at the booth, and we, we kept a record of their comments. You can see the flip chart there behind, John. We also had a, a spatial note map where we were keeping track of what people were saying about particular areas of town and some of their hopes. So, that was, that was a wonderful event. I really got a chance to enjoy that. But I think the outcome is something where we have a policy document, we have a vision, we have an implementation program that we're hoping is going to keep Mr. Post smiling on us as we continue to implement his legacy over the years. This, again, is that context area map where we're trying to identify what it is that people are hoping for in these areas. And throughout the process, people have said, oh, boy, we could just use a little bit more study in the Riverbend area. You know, we, we have to, have to figure out what's going on perhaps next to Corbin Park, or as, as Mullen converts to, to a one-way couplet, what's happening in, in the Selt East neighborhood. So, I mean, we have, we have a sense of, of identity and localizing policy in a way that these context areas allow us to do that. We've tried to capture that in the plan's introduction by giving some aspirational directives related to each of those policy areas. Something a little bit innovation, innovative here for, for Post Falls to consider. So, we translated those context areas and the community vision into a land use map. This, this is one that I, I, I think, I think it may be deficient, one activity area. John, you might, you might want to chime in on that here when I'm done. But it is, it is a new way of looking at land use policy in the city of Post Falls. You'll see that Highway 41 corridor is now pink and not red. While we're still permitting commercial uses in that highway corridor, we're actually trying to allow for a little bit more flexibility, so folks can respond to the market and incorporate some of those mixing of uses that the community is looking for and that we're seeing market forces supporting now and into the future. And then we're also trying to localize and provide for more compact commercial development in some of these areas that are established as nodes. You can see that happening in downtown. And then also those red circles that we're looking at are to provide for more of the mixing of uses and more of the small-scale neighborhood commercial development that the development community has called for and that the community is really looking forward to see happen. I mentioned our implementation chapter 10. This is really, in many ways, where, where the, the rubber meets the road, and we identify those strategic actions, and we prioritize in short, medium, and long term, so that city council can get a chance to, to see the steps that it can take in the near term to really get this plan going. It also assigns responsibility, so as you're looking at individual budget items, you can consider who is most responsible to tackle these tasks, go ahead and assign them and use them to inform your budgeting process year after year. All right, so, that's the Comprehensive Plan update summarized. Thank you very much for sitting, sitting through my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer those.
Bill, Ron Jacobson, I do have a couple of questions. I was noticing reading through it that, and maybe this is a John, John Manley question, but a lot of the statistics, the graphs, the depictions you had in the presentation were either through 2015 or 2016. I guess first question that jumps to mind is that's four or five years ago. And have things changed enough to where those graphs, et cetera, that were shown are not, are no longer pertinent, and can they be updated as we move forward with this?
I'll start, and then, John, maybe you can, you can chime in. We did an economic and demographic assessment at the outset of the process, and that's where a lot of that information came from. I think we're all eager to see where the 2020 census is going to take us and what we're going to learn from that. So, the, while the, while the numbers may change between 2015, 2016, and today, we believe that the percentages and the allocations are relatively consistent. That's backed up by some of our research into the American Community Survey, which is the best, most current available data, but even that can be up to five years old. So, what we've, what we've decided to do here is to use the, the Kootenai Metropolitan Planning Organization forecasts for the look forward in terms of overall population and presume the accuracy of the data from 2015, 2016. Now, when the 2020 census comes out, it'll probably make sense to take a look at that and see if we were right and see if the allocations and percentages are still consistent.
Good. I appreciate that. It just, you're doing a Comprehensive Plan going forward, and my concern is that we're using information from five years ago, so I appreciate that. See what the census says.
If I could add, you know, through the public process, what it kind of reinforces the numbers is the public input and their vision that whether the growth rate is or the numbers are in 2015, 2016, it was consistent with the vision that we heard from the public process, and there wasn't a lot of discrepancies. So, I would argue that policies in Appendix B would still be consistent even if we had more current numbers.
Okay. Appreciate it. How about other questions for John or Bill? Seeing none. Well, Linda, go ahead, please.
I just have a comment, John and Bill. I, this is some of my favorite kind of reading. I know some people don't like it, but when you start reading through your 330 pages of this, I like it. I feel like the changes in it, most of the changes in it are very good and probably for right now, just through my eyes, pretty much spot-on. I had just a couple of concerns, maybe. But I, I, I think that we're still in the midst of the parking plan for the downtown city center. Is that correct?
We got an approved city center parking plan. Implementing it though is where the, is maybe a little tricky is, you know, how is it going to get funded? Who's going to be doing it? Is it going to be private? What role will we know my plan? And I believe that's where the city will balance the attendance of that city center parking plan with the vision of the comprehensive plan and transportation master plan.
Right. Because in the commercial part of this, in the city center, it says reduce or eliminate parking requirements for the city center commercial development. So that just spurred that question for me. And, and just maybe one other comment. I, I'm not concerned about it, but I thought maybe somebody might be concerned about it. We've kind of, for, you know, yeah, we have the smart code, but for most of my way of thinking, we have the R1, R2, R3. And that the R1 used to be one to five units per acre, and now it looks like it's one to eight in the low density. And then the medium density is moved up and then the high density up to 25 dwellings per acre.
Yeah, that's some in response to some of the new zoning districts that we've adopted where they are, they're able to get some density bonuses. So if you do a multifamily project in R3 and you're being proposed in an area as high density, you wouldn't be in non-conforming to the comprehensive plan. So what it allows for is a residential mix zoning in our end zone that we proposed. You may end up getting some single family lots at seven dwellings per acre. And you're not denying a proposed subdivision or proposed a zone change based because of the inconsistency with the comp plan. So that's where you see that variation in density play out.
Thank you.
Al, go ahead, please.
Thank you. One of the things that concerned me was the population growth expectation. I know that KMPO is, came out with that number and when they first came out with the number, we kind of pushed back and said, you know what? We really don't think that we're going to grow like that. KMPO can think that, but we don't think we're going to grow like that. And then we did see some numbers, I think that Bob or somebody put some numbers together that were a little bit more realistic, more maybe in that 80 to 90,000 range. But now we're back to saying, no, we're going to be at 104 by 2040. Just feels like if we work with that number, that we're going to, we're going to work toward that number. Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to. All of the transportation master plan, the sewer master plan, all the master planning has, and to keep all the master plans consistent, we've kept with that KMPO's number. As Bill Grimes stated, at the 2020 census will be coming out. The comp plan, this particular one, because it's been a major overhaul to help position what was mentioned as a sub areas that may need more specific planning are containers for future amendments. So it's taken a little bit longer than maybe other updates to the comp plan. So we started this in 2017 and now here we are in 2020. Doing a comp plan update is probably a 12 to 18 month process. So odds are between 2023 and 2024, staff will be looking to amend the comprehensive plan. At that time, we'll have those 2020 numbers that can play into it. And then staff has already reached out with TMPO at looking at the most appropriate way of planning for the next 20 years. So that way, that, that number may change. But once again, I'll go back to the vision and the policies. I don't believe that in X three to four that the comprehensive plan, there's anything that's, the vision isn't going to facilitate the growth that we will get, even if it's a little lesser rate.
Thanks, Al. Thanks, John. Any other questions, comments? See none. So you need, uh, do we need to, need to take action on this at this point?
Sean, let me jump in here. We will bring you back in ordinance to adopt the comprehensive plan at a future meeting. I don't know if John needed any direction from you tonight, but that would be the next official step is we'll bring a resolution to adopt this new comprehensive plan.
And you need a motion for that, or is can we just direct staff to do it?
John, were you needing anything specific you wanted to cover?
If there is some like change that we would need to have to know what that is so we can have a final draft and have it final published now so that we is ready with the ordinance. And it appears as if I don't hear any changes unless somebody else wants to bring something out.
I don't see anybody jumping in at this point. Uh, Joe, please.
Can't hear you, Joe. Does this not working?
Yeah, you are now.
Are you, am I on?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So the, my two concerns have, have already been brought up. I guess just kind of emphasizes in the the city center about eliminating parking requirements. It wasn't that long ago that we actually added parking requirements in that zone. So, you know, I, I don't want to end up where people having to park miles away and walk in that sort of thing. So if there's a contradiction there, then that probably ought to be resolved. And also to Linda's point, if I'm understanding this correctly, the description of higher densities in R1, R2, R3 is only to allow for more open space. Is that correct? So if somebody wants to build an apartment complex, they'll dedicate 20% to a park, then they can increase the density to get the same units per acre over the entire development as opposed to putting buildings over the open spaces. Am I understanding that correctly, John?
Yeah, that's correct. What we have is the R1, R2 and R3 zones still have their cab densities of whatever that is. Five for R1. I believe it's mostly 12 for R2 and 18 for the R3. The only way to get increased densities is through some performance measures in a development agreement that they're providing. So, and that's what the comprehensive plan entertains. Now going back to the parking aspect of the first part of this was so the policy is there because typically your downtowns don't look like Selt East Way where you have a sea of parking and a only 20% of the lot with a structure on it. So the way I interpret that, the policy point is you're still focusing on reducing the amount of parking for each site because you want it downtown. You want to promote more of a built environment. And where you seek to implement that is through the code. And that's where we've had some minor tweaks to smart code currently is to say, okay, maybe in this area, we still want to focus on reducing the importance of parking, but we're going to tweak it and require a little more parking for, in this case, it was the SC5 for multifamily standalones and for our SC5 mixed use buildings. So the policy point, I think still is consistent with that city center plan that was done a while back for creating a downtown. But I appreciate the concern and staff hears that and we're adjusting it as needed and as projects come online.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't contradictory to the stuff we've been doing recently in terms of increasing the requirement. So, but now, and now I'm on board.
Thanks, Joe.
I don't know if I read the agenda wrong, but was this a public hearing or was this just a presentation?
It's a public hearing. Thank you. Appreciate that. So that would have been staff report. Shannon, do we have anybody wishing to testify on this?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing that I forgot to formally open. Thank you, Al. And then council, how would you like to act on this? I guess we, we don't need a formal motion to direct staff to bring it back in a future date.
So we can do that. If that, that's probably the cleanest way to handle this.
Do it with a motion?
Yeah, a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan.
Don't move.
Motion and, and second. Further discussion. Seen none. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Joe, you're muted, Joe. Can you unmute and say? One more, one more time, Joe?
Aye.
There you go.
Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes and thank you, John. Thank you, Bill and Al. Thank you for keeping me on track. I was involved in the conversation. Forgot it was a public hearing. So thanks for pointing that out.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks, Bill. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions. And we have two ordinances. The first is the Savory, Savory annexation.
Move to place the ordinance Savory annexation first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy.
One more time, Joe?
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 8.61 acres located in the southwest quarter of section six township 50 north, range five west, Boise, Meridian, County, Idaho. And zoning the added property high density multifamily residential R3 providing for an amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
To approve the ordinance Savory annexation, demand the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And the next action is ordinance is a budget amendment, number one fiscal year 2020.
Move to place the ordinance budget amendment number one fiscal year 2020 on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Idaho, mending the annual appropriation ordinance 1367 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019 to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure for previously unbudgeted fund balance. Increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds providing the tax levy upon taxable property within the city is not affected hereby. Providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict. Providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication date.
Move to approve the ordinance budget amendment number one fiscal year 2020 to ask the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is new business. We have none. Followed by administrative staff reports and we have none. Next item would be citizens issue, written comments only. Shannon, do we have anyone wishing to testify tonight?
We have one. This is by Dawn Eckhoff. This is dear city council. I moved to Post Falls 21 years ago, made it my home and have lived on both sides of the river. On a daily basis, I have been longing for the Greens Ferry Bridge to be replaced. The frequent drives either to Spokane Street Bridge or to Route 95 and Coeur d'Alene takes time and are cause for safety concerns given the road and the weather conditions. School bus times are much longer than necessary. It is my understanding that the city has been obligated since 1968 by both the state Supreme Court as well as the district court to replace or repair the bridge that was illegally disassembled by the city. Point of fact, the city has been obligated to maintain the bridge prior to the court rulings, but chose not to do the appropriate maintenance on the original structure or to replace the structure once it had been taken down. This was a real hardship on citizens living on the south side at the time and since. There are now significant real estate developments taking shape on the south side. I would assume and expect that substantial impact fees have been assessed associated with the permitting process for those and future developments. As the existing road infrastructure is not sufficient to support this additional traffic and these and future new builds, fees should go a long way towards paying for a new bridge. Given the very high taxes paid by the riverfront properties, I would hope that the new bridge be an appropriate complement to the community. It has a beautiful setting and is an opportunity to bring the city of Post Falls up to modern standard of excellence. Post Falls has an image problem and doing this long overdue bridge as a point of pride would go a long way to improve the city's image. As you know, Greens Ferry Road is a pioneering and important road in the early days. It cut straight across from highway two down to the main road to Moscow. Its historical importance should be respected and so it was much appreciated that the Greens Ferry overpass was put in place. To make that, that overpass valid, the old route south should be open to four lanes if at all possible. I am worried that bad planning in the past may have limited the bridge to only two lanes due to the approach infringements near the river. That could be long-term planning mistake to restrict this much needed corridor. I appreciate this message is a few days late, but I only now noticed the hearings a middle date. I'd appreciate if this could be entered into the public hearing record. And that was by Dawn and Catherine Eckhoff.
Thank you. I'm a bit of a loss there for talking about the bridge over the river.
Yes, and I have, I have notified him that that is actually a Post Falls Highway District project.
As I just further, and Linda, you'll remember, Carrie, you may, I believe that bridge burned. When I was a kid, it was many, many years. It was a wooden bridge. So anyway, as long as you've notified him that it is not city Post Falls, but Post Falls Highway District, I appreciate that.
And we don't have citizens on the south side of the river. Not in that area.
No, correct.
That's what I was going to say, on the south side of the river, any impact fees on the south side of the river, that's county. So.
And I don't even know if county is charging impact fees over there, but you're right. Linda, you had a comment?
That's what I was going to say, that it's in the county.
Yeah. It was interesting. Thank you very much.
Halfway. Just one more thing, Mayor. There is a little bit of confusion, I think, and have been for probably as long as I've been alive. The Post Falls Highway District being named the Post Falls Highway District just gives the implication, I think we've all talked about this before, that Post Falls has some sort of control over that highway district, which we do not. It's my understanding.
Separate entity, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was it on the public comment, Shannon?
That was it.
Okay. Next item up is mayor and council comments. You know, I would just say the crazy times continue. You know, we've asked for understanding and, and consideration and kindness and, you know, hopefully that will, we will continue to show that, especially in Post Falls, because these are very unusual times. So hopefully normalcy, whatever that may be, will come to pass soon. We will get back to normal if there is such a thing as normal anymore. But I would ask that everyone just bear in mind that we are all one people and there's no one better than anybody else. So treat each other with kindness and respect. How about council comments? Carrie, go ahead.
I, we have one hour and 12 minutes. If anybody has an absentee ballot in their possession that they have been intending then was too late to mail it, obviously. So you have about an hour and 10 minutes to make it over to the CUNY County Elections Office on North Third Street and hand deliver it. It must be received by 8:00 PM. So there you go. If it's on the coffee table, on the dining room table, and you kept meaning to put us, put it in the mail. Last call.
Thank you. Anyone else? We do not need an executive session tonight. We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
So the next motion is adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.